I called the Planning Board for Pitt County in session and I thank everyone that is here to, in the audience, in person and on TV. Beautiful day today and we're concluding today with business of the county. And at this time, I would, before we introduce, have a call, a roll call, I'd like to recognize two people that were reappointed by our county commissioners. And Clay Malloy, thank you very much for agreeing to serve again with us. And Thomas Harris, I appreciate you serving.
Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
And we have three new members to the board. And I'll start, all of them are sitting to my left here. At the very end, we have Stephen Laffridge representing at-large.
Yes, sir.
Welcome, Stephen.
Thank you.
And we have Matt Nobles representing District 5. Thank you, Matt. And a face that many of us know and have known for years, Mr. Kenneth Ross has been appointed to this planning board. Kenneth, welcome.
Thanks.
With that, Tab, if we could have a roll call.
Fay Barefoot?
Here.
Frank Brannum?
Here.
Jacob Cox?
Here.
Lyman Hardy?
Here.
Wanda Harrington?
Here.
Thomas Harris?
Here.
Stephen Laffridge?
Here.
Clay Malloy?
Here.
Matt Nobles?
Here.
Kenneth Ross?
Yeah.
And William Wooton?
Here.
Thank you, Tab. We do have a forum. At this time, I would like to ask our Vice Chair Fay Barefoot if she would lead us in our prayer and then follow it with our Pledge of Allegiance. If we all stand, please.
Our Father, we are thankful for today and we're thankful for the many blessings that you bestowed upon us. And we pray now that you would bless this meeting and everything that is done here or said would be for your honor and your glory in your name. Amen. Turn to the flag, everybody. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Barefoot. The first item of business is for the board served last month, the approval of the minutes of September the 19th. So, move. All in favor? Any opposed? Pass. Thank you very much. The next item is for the Planning Board appointments and reappointments. I've already recognized the new members, but at this time Lisa Overton would like to swear those new members in and then we will have election of officers. Lisa?
Thank you. If at this time, we could have our new board members come down to be sworn in, if everyone could just come down, we can all do it at once. And if there's anyone who does not want to swear, if you want to affirm, you can do that. Otherwise, if you place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right hand, and you're going to repeat, filling in your own name, of course, I state your name.
I, Christopher Laffridge.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain the Constitution?
That I will support and maintain the Constitution.
And laws of the United States?
And laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina?
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith?
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties?
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of my appointment to the Planning Board of Pitt County.
Of my appointment to the Planning Board of Pitt County.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Also, at this time, it is appropriate for us to, now that we have all of our new board members seated and present, to go ahead and elect officers for our upcoming year. And the manner in which that we will do that is that we will open the nominations for the position of chairman first. There is no need to second a nomination. So, we will open the floor for any nominations. We will close the floor for nominations and then we will vote in reverse order if there's more than one name that's nominated. So, at this time, I'd like to go ahead and open the floor for nominations for the position of chairman.
Well, Fay Barefoot? I know you recline, but you're the Vice Chair girl. Time to step up? Earn all that money we pay you.
And are there any other nominations for the position of chairman? Then we will close the nomination for the position of chairman and at this time, we'll go ahead and entertain a vote. All of those in favor of electing Fay Barefoot as chairman of the Pitt County Planning Board, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. And we'll move on to the position of Vice Chairman. At this point in time, we will open the floor for nominations for the position of Vice Chairman.
Well, Lyman Hardy?
Any other nominations for the position of Vice Chairman? At this point, we will close the floor for nominations for the position of Vice Chairman and we will go ahead and take a vote. All of those in favor of electing Lyman Hardy to serve as Vice Chairman of the Pitt County Planning Board, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And anyone opposed? All right. Thank you. Also, it's appropriate at this time that we call for the reappointment of the Planning Director as our Executive Secretary. So, if we could have a member to make that recommendation at this time.
I make the recommendation to reappoint James, the Director.
Okay. And we will go ahead and take a second on that and a vote.
Second.
And all of those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed?
All right. At this point, I think it would be appropriate to take a break to allow for the reseating of our chairman and our vice chairman and then we'll be ready to resume with the rest of the meeting. At this time, we'd like to bring the meeting back into order. James, at this time, I'll turn it over to James. He has an item to present at this time.
Thank you, Chairman Barefoot. And we'll move forward on with one other administrative item and I'd also like to welcome the new members as well. We look forward to working with you. And of course, we'll be talking a little bit in this next section about maybe a new member's orientation, if you'd like to have that in the month of November. But that is also kind of paired with the change of the November meeting date. We're a little concerned that our regular standing meeting on the third Wednesday night would be the night just before Thanksgiving Day. So, staff has checked on the availability of this room and I want to at least lay out as a proposal to move the date either to the day before, that would be Tuesday, November the 20th, or either the following Monday, Monday, November the 26th. And we'd also like to discuss about the time of that meeting, whether you'd like to hold it at 5:30 or change it some, because we are looking from the staff, probably taking about an hour for orientation session to take the new members and certainly any of the existing members that might want to refresh their course through some of the parameters of our zoning ordinance, subdivision regulations, any other items that our ordinances may call for. So, we want to give some time for the new members to, in an informal setting, that will not be televised, but it'll be either preceding or following the meeting. So, we lay all that before you, the date, the time, and whether you'd like the orientation session before or after that meeting. Madam Chair.
Okay. At this time, could we have some discussion from the board as to the date? Do you prefer, what date do you prefer? The 20th or the 26th to begin for the next meeting in November?
I know I've got another board meeting on the 20th. So, that wouldn't be a good option for me.
26th be fine with me. I'd be out of town.
Okay. I guess it would be best to take a vote on the 20th. How many could attend the 20th? Just raise your hand if you could attend a meeting on the 20th. Okay. What about the 26th? It looks like the 20th had it, but the 26th?
I lost the game.
Okay.
I think the 26th would be the best.
Okay. Well, let's, if that's, if we're all in agreement, we'll meet November 26th.
How about that?
At what time, James, you think would be best? 5:30?
Again, I'll leave it open to you as to how many may want to attend the orientation session and whether you'd like to have that before or after your regularly scheduled meeting. We'll be advertising the meeting date change anyway, so if we wanted to change the time, we could. What staff was proposing was to have the orientation session ahead of time. That would allow the new members to be brought up to date, maybe some of the questions they might have from tonight's meeting, leading into, we're proposing to have a public hearing at that meeting also, and giving them a little taste for what's to come at the public hearings. So, that's our proposal, but we could start at 5:30 with the regular meeting and do orientation after. That is your discretion. We can go either way.
What about having, how many is in favor of having the meeting at 5:30 or 5:30?
You mean, the orientation would start at 5:30?
The orientation. The orientation. We have the orientation.
Orientation followed the meeting, wouldn't it?
Yeah.
Well, for the new members, if they're going to be conducting business that night?
Yeah.
James, I could probably make that a 4, I could make a 4:30.
Or maybe 5 and 6.
Sure, I could do that.
And that's something, you know, we didn't lay out if you wanted it earlier, even at 4:30, and we can have that orientation session, keep our regular standing time, or 4 o'clock, if you want an extra time. We at least wanted to get your input as to what works best in your schedule.
I'm flexible that day. I could probably do 4:30 or 5:00.
I mean, it works. I'd like it closer to 5:00 if I could.
Sure. Do 5:00.
But, I mean, I could probably do 4:30, so.
4:30 for the orientation session. All right. And then we'll have a 5:30 meeting?
Keep the regular scheduled time.
Regular time.
Okay. We will advertise that for Monday, November 26th. Orientation session will be open to the public but won't be televised and then we'll follow up with our regular standing time at 5:30 for our meeting and more than likely, we will have a public hearing that night. Very well. Thank you for handling those. And next item is for Matt with the street subdivision, or subdivision street maintenance issues.
As a refresher from previous meetings, Pitt County has about 35 miles of unadopted streets that have, you know, previously been built out of subdivisions. And DOT has yet to take over maintenance due to various reasons. One, developers haven't petitioned DOT, developers haven't kept up maintenance, other reasons like that. Approximately three miles of those streets are rated in poor condition and kind of look like the pictures you see on PowerPoint in front of you. A further 12 and a half miles are in fair condition. And together, the 12 and a half and three miles represent about 40% of the streets, or a little over 40%, that are either in fair or poor condition. And fair-conditioned streets can move to poor-conditioned streets very easily, depending on the weather and traffic and whatnot. Last month, we had representatives from NC DOT, they talked about the petitioning process to get streets turned over to them from their point of view. And tonight, we have invited Mr. Mike Baldwin, a local surveyor, that can speak from the developer's side, from the surveyor's side, as far as what goes into getting the streets adopted. And per the Pitt County subdivision ordinance, new streets in Pitt County are to be built and maintained at the expense of the developer until they've been taken over by DOT. And DOT must be petitioned to adopt the proposed public streets and the streets must be in a serviceable condition. So, with having said that, I'll basically turn it over to Mike and let him present what he has. And he'll take some questions for you and so can I.
Thank you, Ms. Barefoot and board members. I'm Mike Baldwin and I appreciate the asking of James to come here and speak with y'all. I've been in business in Pitt County, running an engineering and surveying business for 23 years, 23 years was October 1st. I guess our little niche is private subdivisions, residential subdivisions. That's, in the course of being in business, that's what we've done the most of. That's, not that we don't like to do other projects, that's just seems to, what has, we fit the mold for. I have probably over-prepared you with this handout that I've gotten, but I wanted to come over-prepared instead of under-prepared. Because I've given basically a step-by-step process to, that goes into a subdivision. So, I'm going to give y'all the choice. Do y'all want me to cut to the chase of getting the streets accepted or how you go from the beginning to getting the streets accepted? And it's not going to hurt my feelings either way, which one you decide.
Let's cut to the chase.
Yeah.
All right. Well, all right. When you, Pitt County has an ordinance of requirements that they require on the, that delegates how streets are designed along in coordination with NC DOT. You can have public streets and you can have private streets. Most people choose to have public streets instead of private streets. If you have private streets, there's some liabilities, long-term liabilities that come along with that. If you have public streets, DOT gives you a choice, whether you want ribbon pavement and shoulder ditches, like a typical county road, or they give you a choice of, you could have curbing gutter. A lot of developers in the last few years have been elected to go into curbing gutter just because there's several reasons. The erosion control problems are probably cut, I would say, you probably have a third, two-thirds less erosion control problems because you don't have side ditches with all the sediment associated with. The other reason is the cleanliness of the project once it's finished. When the builders are moving in, setting their culverts, you don't have all that dirt and everything associated with the driveways of leading into the, in the houses. The downside of curbing gutter is the price point. You have to justify the cost and make sure that you can put the cost into the lot and house to be able to justify it. Most builders use a ratio of a lot value of 20% of the lot is the total cost of the house and lot together. So, they got to factor that to make sure that if they go with roll-type curbing gutter, I mean, excuse me, with curbing gutter, that that's, that that works and their margins are still met. When you have curbing gutter in the state system, you have the choice of going, choosing roll-type curbing gutter or standard curbing gutter. When I say roll-type, I think everybody, if y'all are not familiar with me, it what, it's just a slight slope. It keeps you from having to break the head off the curb when installing your driveways. Some people still prefer the standard.
Sorry, Mike. Maybe I got, you might have a little piece of roll-type.
Okay. Yeah. There's roll-type right there and that's Bristolwood subdivision, right there. Matter of fact, I developed that subdivision, so, but, so it is, the only disadvantage of roll-type curbing gutter is you have to have more catch basins because you don't have the depth of flow in roll-type curb that you do in standard curb. It's .3 versus .5. So, then you get over to the next picture that is what I would call ribbon pavement and shoulder ditches. This subdivision looks like it's in good shape. But, a lot of the problems that developers face is you can't petition NC DOT to accept the streets until an occupancy level has been met. And if you'll turn over to page 20, they're gone, I took you through it quick, didn't If you'll go to page 20, you'll look at a acceptance of public roads by NC DOT. After a certain number of homes have been occupied, not houses built, homes occupied, that's, there's, in this economy, there's a big difference. Homes have been occupied on streets within a subdivision, the developer or property owners may petition NC DOT to maintain the streets within the subdivision. There must be at least two occupied residents for each tenth of a mile, so two per 528 feet. And a minimum of four occupied homes is required for the addition of roads less than two tenths of a mile. A minimum of two homes must have primary access to cul-de-sacs. What that is, is the state subdivision, the way the state ordinance for design of subdivision roads requires that four lots, if you have a cul-de-sac, that you have four lots fronting on the cul-de-sac. So, that's 50% of those. So, when you've met the occupancy criteria, now you're faced with, well, what's happened? Okay. And it's, it's years down the road normally. Back in, you know, back in '04, '05, '06, it wasn't always years down the road. But in normal, standard times, it's years down the road before the occupancy levels are met. And in those years, a lot of things happened and Eric described a lot of them. You have pavement failures, which I don't, I don't experience that as much as some of the other things. You have pavement failures and subgrade failures. But the most failures or the problems that I see in getting the street accepted is, and I don't want the builders to keen in on this meeting, and then they don't, some builders don't understand at what grade the culverts have to be installed at, which is 2.7 feet below the center line of the road. And it's not their fault, they just aren't privy to that information. Normally, the septic tank contractor installs the drain tile, I mean, the driveway culvert for them. So, in that situation, what you, a lot of the problems that I see, you have driveway culverts that the grade is inverse, like the street's flowing from here to here, the grade on the pipe might be that way.
That sound like one put in by the state.
Well, luckily, they maintain it. But another thing is they don't, DOT requires a minimum of 12 inches of cover over the driveway at the pipe. You see a lot of that. They're, they're either, well, most of them, you won't find one too deep. You might find it too deep to drain into the ditch beside it, but usually, it's too shallow. Another problem is that the, when they're landscaping the lot, a lot of landscapers tend to pull grade toward the ditch. Then that messes up the flow line of the ditch. You've got standing order in the ditch. People fail to maintain the shoulders of the, of the road in front of the property. So, let's say three years goes by before DOT has petitioned to take the street over. All right? You petition DOT, you have, there's a form in their manual you have to fill out. You petition DOT, one of their inspectors goes out and normally, he gives you a list about, from here to here along, of items that need correcting. And you can't argue with it because, I mean, most of the things are warranted. But where developers have so much problem at is then they get a consultant, like myself or other consultants in town, normally the one who did the job for them. Then we go out and get contractors to give bids on fixing these repairs and they are astronomical. And that is why you have, Eric, how many roads?
35. Well, 35 miles of unadopted streets.
35 miles of unadopted streets. The developer elects, he has a street maintenance disclosure that he signs on the final plat. The developer, because- The developer, because it is so cost prohibitive to make all these remedies and normally, well, I can say 99% of the time, they're not caused by the developer. They're caused by the end user. But he is faced with such a bill that he no longer has a, a subdivision loan, a development loan for. He's drawn out of that. The money made on the subdivision, he's probably spent that. And, and there's, and the bank's not going to lend you money to go back and repair, uh, items on a punch list issued by DOT. So you're in a catch-22 situation. What do you do? And it's been the experience of most of the developers that I work with, they, they still assume responsibility rather than fork out that money. And when I, I say money, it is a lot of money. It is probably, I would say in the range of 25 to 30% of the original construction cost of the road because you're doing so much breaking up concrete driveways, relaying pipe, uh, regrading ditches, reseeding, making sure the seed stays planted, dealing with homeowners. It, it is a, a nightmare. The city, and I, and I'm gonna just refer to how the city works. The city does a punch list and, uh, once you satisfy that punch list, your, you, your hands are washed clean of the responsibilities of that road. It is the city's road at that time. Unfortunately, DOT doesn't work that way. At the end of a subdivision, we inspect a street. We have a testing agency go in there first. When the road's being built, we proof roll all the roads with a dump truck full of sand to make sure there's no deflection in the subgrade before the stones place down. We have the stone rolled. We check to make sure the depths are there. All right? And then we have, after the road is paved, we go back and make sure the stone and the asphalt are compacted correctly. And then that information is later turned in to DOT upon the acceptance, for the acceptance process. But that still doesn't take care of all these items that I've brought to y'all's attention that, that lie out there that are the, the burden of the developer. Sometimes a neighborhood, I, I don't, I don't know that I can recall it, but it is, a lot of times a neighborhood, they could willingly, as I said in this, the, the developer and/or other persons in the neighborhood can petition DOT for acceptance. So if a neighborhood got together, they could do it themselves. But, um, that's basically how the process go. It's a, it's a hard process. And, and that's why you see developers frown against it and that's why you see Eric or hear Eric giving you the number of 35 miles. I have given you a lot of other information that you might reuse it in your spare reading time. I wasn't sure exactly what I was gonna be asked, so I, I, I brought it, it all from start to beginning. But, um, with all that said, um, do y'all have any questions?
Mike, um, you do this work, your work in counties other than Pitt.
Yes, sir.
Is this a common occurrence in other counties or there, somebody out there got a magic answer to this problem that we can just copy it and go on?
No, no, sir, I'm Mr.
I was afraid you.
It, uh, it is in, it's in every county. And it, and it, and they're, they're very fair across the board. I don't have, I don't have one district engineer's office, uh, beaten down on me any harder than the other one. You know, we know what the standards are. We know what the requirements are, but it's just getting that information relayed on to the end user to make the process easier for the developer.
Any other questions from the board?
Mike.
Mr. Baldwin.
Go ahead, you can go ahead.
Um, when y'all develop the subdivisions, I mean, I worked with a lot of residential contractors myself. Do they have, they know this information, what standards or, you know, what they need to have done? So eventually this will get better because I know me, I mean, we do residential clearing, grading. Not once has a contractor ever told me, this is the depth I want the pipe, this is how I want this done, you know, never once. So, I mean, I think it might help if the contractors or generally it's the contractors we work with, you know, have a better idea of the information. It might help.
It, it probably would be a good idea for the, the, and I, I guess I would put this in the, in the hands of the planning department to, to contact, um, you know, all the, um, general contractors, you know, home builders. I don't know that you would need to be contacted, commercial builders, just to let them know, you know, what is expected when they're a septic tank man, and that's who usually puts in the driveway culverts. When, uh, the person installing the driveway cover comes and installs, uh, that, that item. Um, you know, it, um, you know, another thing, um, a lot of times it happens is the wrong size pipe will, will get installed. You'll look, uh, upstream and there'll be a 15-inch pipe and then downstream, excuse me, upstream, there'll be an 18-inch pipe and then downstream, there'll be a 15-inch pipe. Well, it doesn't take a, um, the genius to figure out and not, that, that, they don't look at things like that. They don't know to look at things like that. So I'm not here, uh, you know, saying they, they should have seen that. It's, it's hard to tell, you know, for me, you know, with the naked eye looking at, at two different pipes. But, you know, a lot of times that happens. Well, that's the, you know, that's the problem for DOT because when we do our calculations for, uh, pipes in the ditches and the flows in the ditches and how deep the water gets in a certain storm event, um, we base it on, you know, what pipe size it is. So that's, uh, so it, it would be a good idea. I don't know, I don't know, you would probably almost have to have a, probably a hearing, you know, to, or, or, you know, a handbook to send out to, um, to building contractors. Building contractors and just a consortium of people that deal with, you know, the building of houses in, in subdivisions. And, and again, that's why developers are leaning so much more toward, uh, curbing gutter streets. It is, uh, and I, and I, I think you'll find staff is much more pleased when they, uh, see plans that come in for, for curbing gutter streets.
I got a question for you. Is that information on the maps?
Is that information on the maps?
If when we record these maps, could we not put that information on it that the driveway needs to be set at a certain depth and the tile will be set in such a huge lot?
The, the maps that are recorded, uh, are maps that show information pertinent to, uh, title information, bearings and distances of the lots, the size of the lots, the acreage, the easements and things like that. The information, the, the cross sections that, that show what the depths are and everything, that's short showing more on the construction drawings.
And Mike, that, that stuff is in the, um, the, the secondary of the subdivision construction book from DOT, minimum street.
Yeah, the, the minimum street standards for.
It doesn't, it doesn't get pushed down to the, to the actual guy doing the work from, you know, maybe.
Yeah, I've been doing it 30 years and I have never heard that information about how deep to set that tile. Only thing I've ever done with them was setting what they're flush with the bottom of the existing ditch.
Well, if the, if the subdivision is new, um, normally you can do that. And, um, and normally it turns out okay.
If the information was on the map somewhere, I mean, just as a note on the full surface, you know, full map.
Right.
I get the map and look at it, I could read that, you know.
You would think that they would have something like this with, with what you have to go through just to get a permit to build a house. They would have something like this at standard.
Well, and, and probably, uh, you know, it, it could go, it could be boiled down to the inspections department. Uh, did they prepare some type of, uh, uh, you know, a, a handout? Because when the inspections department goes out to do a final CA, uh, that, that matter could be addressed then as well.
Go out and do a final one, that's too late.
That's right.
It needs to be done before that.
Well, then.
The initial inspection would probably be the best time before concrete and everything's put on the.
Right, well, everywhere, I don't know every which phase of inspection. I don't know when it's the framing inspection, the, um, I don't know how many inspections they go through, but sometime before the concrete is poured for the driveway.
The tile, the tile is set before you start the house. I mean, that'd be a, be the information, what size tile and all you'd like to know in advance. And I don't think the inspection department would have that information either, what size tile you would have to have, you know, and all.
Well, and that, that's something that could be in, uh, you know, I, I hate to burden, uh, burden developers and builders and things, but that, that's something that, that maybe should be included on construction, construction plans, is to show on every individual lot. But it still has to be funneled down from the developer to the person building the house so that there's no lack of communication. Unless, unless that happens, all the information that we put on the map is basically null and void.
I build them and I, I think that I get the subdivision map if I buy a lot. If the information's on there, I know what to do, but if it's not on there, I don't know what to do.
Well, the, the state has got, uh, a, a manual, this, this free to the public, uh, minimum construction standards for subdivision residences.
It tells you what size tile you'd have to have.
It doesn't tell you the tile size. It tells you, it shows you the cross section that, that is, that you use to determine how, how to, uh, how deep to set the tile at. It's, well, I can run the slope of the edge of the, from the edge of the pavement, center line to the edge of pavement, then the shoulder, then the section of the ditch and the math that just works out to 2.7 feet.
Like on these subdivision, on these private streets, you know, they don't meet the state's requirements for maintenance of them. And I'm wondering if those people that buys those houses are aware of that, those streets are not gonna be able to be taken over by the state.
In private streets? Mr. Ross? Normally there is a, uh, in, in private streets, and we don't do a lot of private streets, uh, but when we do, we have to, um, James, don't we have to present y'all with a, a set of homeowners association that will assume the liability and the upkeep of those private streets? Now, there are some subdivisions that are private streets that are very nice because a lot of the rules that you have to follow in the, in the, the manual that I'm referring to, that DOT provides, you can circumvent that and put some sharper curves in there, put some islands in the roads and things like that to make it more look a more aesthetically pleasing neighborhood. And that's, that's why a lot of people, the ones that do install private roads, that, that's why they do it. And, and the, if the road is put in correctly, if it's, if it's built correctly, uh, the, I don't see the failures, the, in, in the road itself. Uh, the, the failures are in, in the, in, in what's associated with the ditches.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
A lot of these roads and, and a lot of the ones that, um, Eric were talking about are a lot of the older roads. There are a lot of roads that were built on soils that, that weren't suitable at the time. They, they rocked them, they, they bridged the soil as well as they could, they paved them and they kept on trucking. The, the rules, the rules are a lot tighter now, uh, through the help of these guys to ensure they, you know, we have to give them certificates once the road's complete, uh, and they go out there and, and do routine checks as well.
For subdivisions that were, uh, made back in the seventies and eighties that were worn out, where do these people need to go to DOT about petitioning through the whole neighborhood?
Well, that, that's right. They, they get a, there is a form that either the developer signs or the, the neighborhood, the people in the neighborhood sign. Uh, and, and then they take that to DOT. But again, DOT's gonna come out and I'm sure they're gonna elect a representative, poor person, to, um, to, to help them with that. They're gonna get DOT to inspect the street. It's the same thing, it's what I would be doing. And then they're gonna be, they'll take that and then take it to contractors to let them put pricing on it. And then, you know, hopefully, you know, if it's a large neighborhood, everybody can chip in enough money to raise the money to get it fixed so DOT can, can accept it. Once DOT does accept it in the field, I will add, add this, when they, uh, accept it in the field, it normally takes about a three to four month process before the board, uh, the DOT board, you finally get your piece of paper back. So it's a, quite a, it's quite a lengthy process.
So any other question from the board to Mr. Baldwin tonight?
All right, thank y'all. Appreciate you letting me speak.
Appreciate all that you brought to us.
Come out for Mr. Spicer, is there any?
I have some more.
Yes, I thought you did.
Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Um, and, and I would say on, on some of these standards, they, they are in the DOT, you know, subdivision street manual. And whether or not that does get pushed down to the contractors doing the work on the ground is, is, is another matter. It, and it, I just doesn't. And Mr. Malloy, there's, there's some provisions in North Carolina general statutes that I'll briefly touch on in just a minute that, that allows, you know, homeowners to get their streets, um, taken over by NC DOT with, with some kind of county management. And I'll, I'll get into that in just a second. Okay, so going back to roadway maintenance after the project is considered closed out by the county, um, our subdivision ordinance does not explicitly state the subdivider's responsibility to construct and maintain the streets, um, in explicit language. Um, and there's been no standard level of acceptable maintenance for subdivision streets as to, you know, a developer is not doing his duty as far as keeping up the maintenance on the road. And then you get pictures like we saw a little while ago where you have deep potholes and cracked pavement and everything like that. Um, and we have unclear enforcement measures. And tonight we're proposing, um, some, uh, an amendment to the subdivision ordinance to strengthen, uh, to strengthen it. And, uh, we've run the language through legal and, and legal has, has signed off on and says appropriate and recommended that we do add it to the subdivision ordinance. Um, we'd like to add the following paragraphs to section 11 dash 141, the street section of the subdivision ordinance. It shall be the responsibility of the subdivi, subdivider to prepare, construct and maintain all street and street right-of-way improvements until such a time as, one, publicly dedicated roads are accepted for maintenance under the North Carolina Department of Transportation State Road System. It shall be the responsibility of the subdivider to formally petition NC TO, NC DOT to adopt the roads and initiate the process of transferring maintenance to NC DOT. Number two, privately dedicated roads are accepted by duly formed and constituted homeowners association as referenced in section 141 C2 of this ordinance. For the purposes of this ordinance, streets, street right-of-way improvements shall include road surface materials, road base course and the associated drainage improvements, um, e.g., roadside ditches, curb and gutter, storm drains and drainage cross piping. That just lays out that explicit language that tells the developer, if you're going to develop a subdivision, you're responsible for the road maintenance and its improvements. The second, uh, item we'd like to add to the ordinance is, uh, section 11, or propose section 11 dash 141 D5, acceptable levels of maintenance. Acceptable, number five, acceptable levels of maintenance, the subdivider shall maintain roads in accordance with North Carolina Department maintain roads in accordance with North Carolina Department of Transportation's minimum construction standards for subdivision roads. Any of the following items, or any of the following shall constitute a violation of the ordinance by the developer for failing to properly maintain subdivision streets and street right-of-ways. Uh, more than two, two potholes or road surface deterioration over four inches in depth and greater than twelve inches in diameter, any pothole or road surface deterioration over twenty-four inches in diameter, um, pavement cracking and spider webbing greater than a hundred square feet in any one area, or multiple areas greater than five hundred square feet. Vehicle ruts along road, road shoulders or radii greater than four inches in depth, improperly constructed or clogged drainage outlets or cross pipes that do not allow roadside ditches and curb and gutter to drain properly, or any other condition involving the road or road right-of-way that the subdivision administrator has determined to cause an impediment to traffic flows, create an unsafe condition, or damage a motor vehicle. Um, those are the items we, uh, want to add to the ordinance, again, to strengthen it, and, uh, just the, the bullet items I just read as far as maintenance violations, yes, basically, we're seeing a lot of these streets with a lot of potholes in them, and nobody's going in, the developer's not going in and filling the potholes, there's ruts along the roadways where they've started going around the potholes and cracking the pavement off on the side of the, of the roads and, and turn radiuses. Um, and, you know, the, the pavement cracking and spider webbing stuff is, is essentially, you've got a subgrade problem there, so. That's what we would like to add to the ordinance, um, to kind of, to, to strengthen our ability, ability to get developers to maintain these roads, because what it's doing is leaving the homeowners in a very bad spot where they bought these lots, thinking the roads were publicly dedicated streets, and now they're potentially, you know, their roads are falling apart and nobody is maintaining. And, uh, that's, that's kind of where we're at. We recommend, uh, a public hearing at the next planning board meeting and forwarding it to the Board of County Commissioners for, uh, for action. And we are, uh, compiling additional information concerning additional enforcement measures, um, maintenance guarantees, and special assessments, which I'll talk about in just a second, after we get done with some questions, which I'm sure are coming, so.
Any questions from the board?
Matt, based on what we heard Mr. Baldwin talking about, um, in the discussion we had with Mr. Mallory, would it help or hinder if we included in the ordinance, in whatever way you're supposed to do it, where not only with the subdivision acceptance map, plat, that you also have some type of certificate that the construction was in accordance with D O T?
That already is on the map.
That's already on, what about the cross section?
The, the street cross sections are general, I mean, and, and it states in our ordinance, you're supposed to build this stuff to N C D O T minimum standards.
So, when, when it's, when it's filed, it's saying that the subdivision is in accordance with those specifications?
That, that is correct. They, they, the district engineer signs off on the plans, and the developer signs off stating they built the subdivision to the plans.
So, day one, everything's fine?
Should be.
Should be, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Right.
Uh, who, who's actually doing the inspection, I guess? It's not the county's responsibility, is it?
A- as far as our, our, our end up, we go out and make sure the roads are paved, but, you know, as planners, we're not the engineers, but it's, it's essentially up to the developer and his project engineers that got paid money to manage this stuff and make sure that the contractors built it out.
We do get a certification letter, and Mike alluded to that earlier, a certification le- letter from the engineer to indicate that the roads have been built per D O T minimum standards. So, we get the district engineer to sign off on the plat.
Okay.
We also have that certification, we go with that. Again, they're the engineers, we get the engineering certification, we move forward.
So, if the specifications we've been talking about don't get pushed down to the actual contractor doing the work?
It is that period of time afterwards, everything's good, whether, again, we've got situations for the new planning board members, too. We allow developers a two-year window of opportunity, if they provide a financial guarantee to go in and put the improvements in. So, after that, whatever period of time, up to two years, those roads are constructed, we again get the engineer's certification before we release the financial guarantee. It's the period of time after that, and before the threshold of all these minimum requirements, occupancy requirements that come forward from D O T. That is what we call the limbo land. It is that period of time that things go awry, the drainage doesn't function like it's supposed to, you get your potholes, you get a lot, you get concrete mailbox posts put out there in the right-of-way, all those things that D O T does not want to see when they go out to do their punch list once the petition is filed. So, it can be homeowners, it can be people that are using the roadway as a cut through, it can be a number of factors that lead to the deficiencies that are on that punch list. So, uh, again, different than with the municipalities, where those are accepted early on, but you've got to meet those requirements by D O T.
I, I've kind of agreeing with Thomas, is, if, if you get a, a survey of a lot, and he's asked to build a, a house on somebody's lot, there's no way he can know where to put that tile in if it's not on there, and that should go from the flat plan to that, to that transferred lot, and it should have on there. It's just an eighteen inch tile, and it's gotta be-
Two point seven, deep below the roof.
-meet the minimum requirements, which is two point, it just seems strange to me.
And, you know, is that something that needs to be on the construction plan?
I again have been-
That may not be where the construction plan is, the interim plan between preliminary and final.
I really don't think it's appropriate to put on-
It's not anything I've ever seen that I've put in hundreds of.
Probably not appropriate to put on the final plat, that's what is recorded at the register of deeds, and that's for deed transfer and that sort of thing. Probably, again, from the construction standpoint, should be on the construction drawings, but usually don't get to that detail. And there are some other criteria that need to be, uh, included, again, D O T comes into play. It gets back to their minimum standards. What I would suggest, what I heard, you know, whether it's a workshop or something, to bring in some of the contractors, subcontractors with D O T there also, because it all ends up being a decision made by D O T whether to accept these roads. So, if those cul- culverts aren't laid appropriately, if they oriented wrong, D O T isn't going to accept it until they're corrected. So, what I would propose is that in the future, we can put on a workshop here and look at those sorts of things, trying to educate those contractors that are involved. So, um, that's one idea we've got. I heard another ex, well, I'll say further extreme, in our eyes, an extreme, manpower needed, basically to inspect driveway tiles as they're being inspe- uh, installed. And I will tell you, you know, don't know, number one, we've got the folks that are qualified, you almost need a, a surveyor, engineer type to go out and do that. And the other part is, you know, these people would have to be very, very well-versed on what D O T requires.
I don't really think that's necessary, I think these people would put them in right if they had the information.
Well, I think we can start on that process.
I know, I mean, we've done a lot, and we have to go through, um, the D O T when you're doing it on state maintained roads, and so, you know, they give you a long list, and they specify the size of the tile, and how, the depth and everything. You know, maybe if, if there's a person to contact at the N C D O T, where if there are any questions, you know, it could be clarified, and that would make everything a lot easier.
We needed you here at last month's meeting, because we had the D O T officials here then, and it would have been a good point, because I don't know if they've got even the authorization to make those, um, determinations. Because, go ahead.
They do want state maintained roads.
Oh, state maintained roads.
But if, if, if eventually they are gonna take, or the plan is they're gonna take those over, then why not have that, so, you know, some of these issues?
That would be ideal, and we'll ask that question. I, to my knowledge, they really don't provide that input on these non-public streets, and that's what they consider them at this point.
Is that a thing to do, be required a developer to furnish that information to everybody he sold a lot to?
That would be-
That would be the simplest thing, probably.
Yeah, a- a- or a certification after that tile is put in, that Thomas's lot, he put it in like I asked him to, and, and we've taken a shot at it at some point in time.
And that was kind of our whole point, it's, the standards are out there, whether or not they're getting pushed down to the right people.
They absolutely are not.
Right, and, I mean, I, I believe it, I mean, no doubt, yeah.
I don't have a problem with doing anything I'm supposed to do, as long as I know I'm supposed to do.
Yes, sir. Any more questions on some of these specific, um, maintenance items, or, or the language that we're getting into? Or the language that we're proposing for adoption? Um, Mr. Malloy, um, what you were talking about is, as far as getting the, the homeowners together to, to pay for their act, their, their own street improvements. Um, there's legislation, uh, North Carolina general statutes one fifty-three dash two oh five, that allows the county to, to basically project manage the turnover of a street where you calculate the lineal feet of streets to be adopted, and what the, uh, the county does is they go in, they figure out how much it's gonna cost, and they actually pay for the improvements and assess the homeowners in the, they, they create like a little mini district of those homeowners that got those street improvements, and they, they assess them for a period of years until those street improvements get paid for, and that's something the county has not done up until this point, and we haven't ever proposed it, but the legislation is, legislation is out there, and we're taking a look at it, to see if it's something that, that the county is interested in doing, um, and, and whatnot.
Okay.
Matt, uh-
Yes, sir.
Um, thirty-five miles, how many occupied parcels are we talking about in that thirty-five mile?
Mr. Bradham, that is not something we calculated, we did, we did calculate-
A hundred, a thousand? Give me some-
Thousand, bit closer than a hundred, I'm sure.
Yeah, that, that would take a, that, I, I can't even estimate a number, we, we can bring that back to you.
No, it's just not a small-
Right, and now, and, and the segment, the number of street segments was over a hundred, I know. Um, the nu- the number of individual street segments that were not adopted, not necessarily the mileage, but like, from like block to block, or stop sign to stop sign, was over a hundred. Um, and it, I just, I don't have the number in my head right now what it was, but I can get that back to you. But forty, forty percent of that thirty-five miles was fair, was, around thirty-five percent was fair, and eight percent was poor of those streets. Eight percent.
Okay.
Um, Madam Chair, Chairwoman, we, we recommend, uh, holding a public hearing at the next, uh, planning board meeting.
Okay. Do we need to, uh, do a vote, is?
Do a motion, a vote to hold a public-
Motion.
Would like for you to, yes.
Do we have a motion to make the recommendation?
So do.
Take it.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, our next item on the agenda-
Need to vote on it, we've motioned a second, need to vote.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right.
Thank you, ma'am.
Next item on the agenda, some informational items from James, I believe you will connect that.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, just wanted to bring you up to date, um, especially the newer members, we did have a proposed amendment to our zoning ordinance that was recommended by the planning board at its last meeting, and it dealt with, uh, public health grant that our, our office was actively involved with, and it dealt with providing, uh, better access to healthier food. So with that, we had one zoning category out in the county, and you new members, uh, need to get accustomed to these colors and these maps, so this is just a taste of what you might see at the orientation session. Um, basically, we have mostly, um, rural or residential type, um, categories, zoning categories throughout the county. So, again, to orient you, you have the, uh, city limits, we've got ten municipalities here in the county, all ten have what's called extraterritorial jurisdictions, which extend generally about a mile outside the corporate limits, that's shown in this, uh, kind of lavender color, and, um, all those areas, city limits and E T Js are, they are under the authorization and control of the municipalities, so our zoning ordinances do not affect those areas. Outside of that area, these light green areas, that's our rural residential zoning district, dark green, rural agricultural, we also have these rust-colored areas here, this is generally N C forty-three north, heading between Greenville, Ironwood, for example, on out to Falkland, and then a smaller area over near, um, the Lake Christie Timberlake area, uh, of, uh, kind of southeastern, uh, Greenville, in between Simpson and Grimesland. Um, that particular area, the R forty zone, those areas were very staunch as far as what was allowed there, primarily large lot subdivisions, and that particular area did not allow for farmers' markets and fruit stands and that sort of thing. So, we didn't see the need of it, this, uh, any need to restrict these types of operations in these two areas, so simply, what was done at the commissioners' meeting was adding one letter to our zoning ordinance that allowed, uh, these types of uses within R forty, so a Z went in, zoning permit allows for these types of uses to go into R forty zone. So that was approved by the commissioners on Monday night, as was, as was a daycare facility, uh, out off Stanton'sburg Road, and, um, you new members, too, our office is also involved with community development activities, we've got a brand-new, um, scattered site development, um, application that's going in, was submitted today after the commissioners agreed with our proposal to build replacement houses versus rehabbing houses with the monies that are set aside in this program, and this grant will run for three years and close out in twenty fifteen. So, Madam Chair, that is our staff reports, of course, we've got a monthly report in your package as well, and a couple of other transportation-related articles that Tab's been collecting through the month for your information. So, uh, also, for the new members, a lot of our information is on the website, and this is for our viewing public also, uh, be sure to look online, we typically have some current information there, access to census data, access to certain maps that we deal with, and of course, our regulations, so with that, Madam Chair, that's it.
Okay, do we have some comments from the board? We'll start at the other end, if there's any comments.
I have one question, uh, sort of, been with me a right good while, you and I have talked about it quite a bit, James, the, uh, nine-one-one addressing, uh, house numbers being enforced, uh, and whatever, uh, could you speak to that as to how that's progressing or whatever?
Right, um, most of you are aware that the entire county now has an E nine-one-one system. Um, the county's been responsible outside of the city of Greenville for implementing that program. Um, we converted all ours from some of the rural routing box numbers and those sorts of things, starting about fifteen to sixteen years ago, completed that conversion over about a two-year period, then entered into interlocal agreements with the nine municipalities outside of Greenville to convert those addresses. So, if you went on to our county website and you pulled up, uh, in OPUS Online Parcel Information System, you can gain access to all those addressable structures that have been, um, duly assigned addresses. The problem is, and especially for emergency providers, uh, is the posting of those numbers. Uh, we try to, we've got pamphlets, we send out information, we even have a new spot on Pitt TV to indicate how to appropriately install and place those numbers on your house, they need to be four inches, a minimum of four inches in size, and also need to contrast with the color of your, your home. What we've been doing, uh, in bits and pieces around the county is going out to make, uh, enforcement inspections, and what we're generally seeing is about half the people, half the homes have their addresses right on the dime, everything's perfectly, uh, posted, the other ones, numbers might be transposed, they may not have numbers up, they may not contrast with the house, it may be behind a tree, you can't see it, and again, that time, that Thomas is going out there on the fire truck to try to find somebody, again, he's been around for a while, he probably knows where everybody is, but the younger guys may not, and it may be someone on the EMS truck may not know. So, our attempt has been to break up the county, go out and make sure we've got everyone- posting them. Legal staff's been actively involved with the areas we've been in, and we've had, once we've done these enforcement routes, after two or three letters and some comments and some calls, we're getting up to the 98, 99% uh, compliance rate. Takes a lot of time and staff manpower, and I'll be quite honest, we've kind of put that off to the side. However, when we see something, and we see someone doesn't have it posted appropriately, if we're out in the field, we'll certainly let them know that. But, uh, we do try to make sure people know that there are requirements, and it behooves them for emergency services responses to get it up on the side of the house. Has to be posted on the house. If you can't see the house clearly from the street, that address clearly from the street that's on the house, you need to have it posted out by your access point, too. So, appreciate you bringing that up, and any ideas you have for moving forward, we'd be glad to entertain them.
I certainly can commend Pitt County for the effort, and intense work they've done on it, as happy getting around in a, some other work that I do, did, getting in different counties. Pitt County is far ahead of a bunch of neighboring counties.
Well, I tell you, our road signs absolutely are maintained to a T, and I will say, better than any other counties I've seen, and we've had two retired individuals from DOT to come on board with us, and they have a vested interest in keeping those signs up. So, that's another point. If you see any of our green reflectorized signs down because of a wreck, because of a mower hitting them, please contact our office. We need to get those signs back up. And if you've ever noticed, they've not only got the state road numbers, if it is a state maintained road, but they also have the address range in one of the corners of that sign blade, to kind of help emergency services.
Some of the counties I've been in, trying to, trying to find an address when I get to, to a road, but didn't have my GPS, I wouldn't know what road I was on. Well, you got the poster, but it ain't a sign on it.
Sometimes the GPS will fool you, too.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, well.
I tell you.
Martha, comments? You got any comments? Okay. Frank?
Um, Madam Chairwoman, um, we have a staff member, a planner, Andrew Ventressa, who is, he's not here tonight, but he's the redheaded guy that comes and presents to us from time to time. We're losing him. Uh, I understand he's going to Ardell County and Statesville area next week, but we wish him well, he's done a good job.
Absolutely, and thank you, Frank, for bringing that up. Andrew's been instrumental. He's a planner by trade and training, but he handles things in the permitting center. He's even now trained as an inspector, so we're probably losing three in one with Andrew leaving next week, but we wish him well, and, uh, some, uh, Ardell County Planning Director is getting a steal, so, yeah. We hope to get some kickback from that one. We wish him very well.
Okay. Okay. No other comments? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.